I'm from Serbia. Council Burns. Council President Bush.
Yeah.
President, we are all here. I would like to make a note that we have an added item to the agenda, which will be put in after the consideration to ratify City Manager Pro Tem's signature of user agreement to Toledo Dispatch Center. We are adding a request to hire on-call slash casual employees to supplement critical staffing and dispatch. All right. First off, presentation, oath of office for City Counselor Andrew Keating.
Pretty good then. He couldn't do that, did he?
What's the formal one?
Like, put me some down here.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you're just being in front of God and everybody.
Don't help me, God.
Can you raise your right hand, please? I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Andrew Keating, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
That I will. That I will support the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
And Charter and ordinances of the City of Toledo.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Toledo.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of City Counselor of the City of Toledo.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of City Counselor of the City of Toledo.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I'm spotlight a verse, which is why you're running for office, right?
Yeah, exactly. Our next item is a presentation on Purple Heart Presentation, Chief Mike Pace.
She's the daughter of Gary Sumter, who's time, who's killed a lot of duty in nineteen sixty-nine. I'm having you hold it. Here's I'm reading this, it's been a very emotional journey for me and for a lot of people that have been involved in this. It's her dad passed away in nineteen sixty-nine, saving the life of another officer. So it's been a long road. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, the most important family, loved ones of Officer Gary Sumter. Today, we gather to honor a hero, a protector of our community, defender of the justice, and a man of unwavering courage. Patrol Officer Gary Sumter served with distinction, dedication, and steadfast commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of all those he has sworn to protect. The law enforcement Purple Heart is not an award that's given lightly. It's the only one that I know that we've ever given. It is reserved for those who, in the course of their duty, have faced unimaginable peril and have made sacrifices that transcend the ordinary demands of their calling. Officer Sumter exemplified the meaning of service before self, and his actions remind us of extraordinary risks taken by those who wear the badge. Gary's commitment to his community was more than profession, it was a calling. Every day, he stood as a shield between danger and safety, bolstering the weight of responsibility with grace and determination. He met each challenge with the strength of character that defend, defined his life, and inspired those fortunate enough to work alongside of him. Today, we present the law enforcement Purple Heart, not only to commemorate Gary's bravery, but also to express our profound gratitude to his family. To his loved ones, we recognize the depth of your sacrifice. We know that behind every officer stands a family that shares the burden of service. Your strength, resilience, and unwavering support were an integral part of Gary's ability to fulfill his mission. As we honor Gary Sumter's courage, we also vow never to forget his sacrifice. His legacy will forever be etched in the fabric of this community. Through his actions, he has set a standard for dedication and bravery that we guide his for generations to come. To Gary's family, please know that you are not alone. This department, this community, and even this national stand up today, as it always will, beside you. We will carry forward his memory, ensuring that his sacrifice is never forgotten and that his spirit lives on in our continued commitment to justice and service. And his Purple Heart serves as a symbol of our collective respect, our heartfelt gratitude, or a solemn promise to honor Gary Sumter's life and his legacy. Thank you, and may we always strive to live with the same courage and dedication he has now nobly embodied.
I do want to make one other notation to our agenda this evening. The item number four, under discussion, decision items, will be moved to the end of the discussion and decision items. And also, we will be entering into executive session. Yes, Mike.
Just want to add the size of my place in highway two forty-nine.
And we will be taking a recess between this item and the previous item to re-enter executive session. We have more we need to get to, but it was felt that we needed to start the meeting on time. So now you are up to date. All right, visitors, public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to address council this evening? Okay. Not sign in when you get there. And don't worry, Cynthia, I don't think Barry will take that long.
No. My name is Barry Brewster, and I'm a business owner here in Toledo. And I just want to give you an update, so the time gardens that we've got going on, they're still going. Two gardens have had a hard time, and the other one's doing pretty good. And so if it looks like it's weedy, that's okay, we're just gonna let it go like that. And then the time will spread, and eventually it'll just cover the whole area. So we haven't abandoned it, we're still working on it next. Also, the Main Street Association is working on their nonprofit status. And we're gonna try to get a media center through grants once we do that. And so, the Main Street Association?
Main Street Association.
Yes, yes, so we need to be nonprofit to do that. I think that's all I got, thank you.
Barry, one question. What kind of capacity are you open to with the media center?
Well, we'll have to talk about that. No, we're gonna do, we want to do everything, podcasts, television. Probably YouTube primarily, I don't think a television station would. It's too hilly here for that, and there's cost for antennas and. But so YouTube and streaming, let's put it streaming.
Before we do here, Morgan.
Barry, did you sign in on the paper?
Okay. Thank you, George, and I've got three things real quick. Number one, I went to the East County Fire District meeting.
Yeah, sign in, please.
Okay, can I not do it afterwards? So that you don't take my time? Anyway, come to find out that our, one of our fire, that our fire department for the East County is locked out of the fire department. And from what I understand, they are to be running out of the Toledo Fire Department legally, according to the paperwork that I've all read. So somehow, we got a real issue with you guys leaving our community, our East County community unprotected, without proper equipment, without access to their truck that's locked up in there, and for us having to use the bus barns to have meetings. So that, right in itself, I think is wrong, and you guys need to figure out what what problems you have and start dealing with. Don't cause our counties to be left, you know, at risk. Number two, the housing development down there that you're putting in. I understand you have to take permits out for that, and I'd like to know where I can find the actual footprint for where you're gonna put that low-income housing. I want to make sure that you're gonna follow all the same guidelines that the fire departments are having to go through, that the dog control is having to go through, that you're gonna have to have the same engineering. All those same requirements are gonna be required of you, putting that in that wetlands. Number three, when the Seal Rock Fire Department, or Water District, said that they had to have that Water District out there because you had leaking pipes from Toledo to Seal Rock. And they said they were losing so much water for you pumping their water out there. And all this time, they've been using that and pumping water back to Toledo for eighteen houses from Seal Rock. They have to still use those same leaking lines for eighteen houses. And I, there's another example of why you guys can't get along and not be causing us a lack of water. That was the whole reason Seal Rock Water District was even established. It wasn't supposed to just be fire suppression, for the horse park. And then it was, oh, no, we need our own water supply out there because the pipes were failing. Now, we find out two years later, those pipes are still being used. So it was all just lies. So, why we can't trust you, and why all these people are having to show up, it's because nobody's being honest. Now, I'm signing.
Thank you.
And I hope you guys do tell us what actually went on, so that we can have an informed opinion as to what all is transpiring, instead of keeping it all behind closed doors.
Anyone else wish to address council, Steve?
My name is Shannon Bresson, I'm a Toledo Fire Captain. I've been with Toledo Fire for six years, and I've been in the fire service for thirty years. Speaking on behalf of the volunteers who are still concerned about speaking on their own behalf. Also, they're not involved in all the politics, nor do they wish to. They wish to just continue to engage in their sole commitment to the community for fire and EMS response. I cannot speak on behalf of my position or the investigation as the results have not been released publicly. But the volunteers are disappointed that the city has not released a statement and continues to allow the volunteers to receive ridicule, ridicule, sorry. No one expects the city to respond to every Facebook post. As we all know, that is not appropriate, but at least release something. The volunteers continue to serve the community through all the ups and downs, and they don't have to. To the community, there has never been a decrease in response, there actually has been an increase in coverage. As prior to these events, there were times with no coverage, even with the duty officer position. Your volunteers have had an average of three people per call. They answered the highest call volume ever in twenty twenty-four at a thousand and twenty calls, with two hundred and ninety-four of those calls coming after the leadership investigation started. They're already on call number forty for the year. We have lost volunteers through this, just as we had in twenty eighteen, when that chief was released. But the department should not be looked at by quantity, but rather by quality. The quality is there. I trust everyone and would trust them with my life, either in a fire or medical event. We've had an average of two volunteers manning the station Monday through Friday, in addition to the paid staff, and an average of four on the weekends. Toledo Fire may be being dragged through the mud right now, but in the end, it is for the best, and it will only make us a stronger department. Thank you for your time.
Yes, Lisa?
Oh, I was, I just wanted to bring it to attention that I forgot to start the timer off, and I apologize.
So Lisa, you're gonna need to really raise your hand, because I have Amanda directly in my line of sight between you, and your dark hair does not show up that much around her longer.
I won't.
Do that. Anyone else? Yes, please. Just be sure to sign in the sheet and fire away.
My name is Dawn Davis, I'm a resident of Toledo, I've been here almost six years. I've been with the Toledo Fire Department for five and a half years. I just want the residents to know that the Toledo Fire volunteers are doing everything they can to take care of this town, even though people are being very negative towards us. I can speak my opinion now, I only posted once on Facebook, because I was sick of it. But I resigned on the Toledo, and I'll be moving out of town. I feel that some of these residents are being really harsh to our department. So I really hope that you guys can shed some light on what is right, what is wrong. I love our chiefs to death, I absolutely love them to death. I love the Toledo Fire that's still with us. So we all need answers, you know, and I understand it's probably gonna be really hard, but this town needs answers because there's so much going around, and so much, it just feels so, I can't take it. You know what I mean? I mentally cannot take it. And fun fact is, these volunteers, we buy all our own shirts, we get one shirt a year, we buy our sweatshirts, we borrow tactical pants, we borrow our tactical boots, which are very expensive. Our gas might go into every call, sometimes three calls a day, back and forth to home, being away from our family, missing our dinners. We deserve appreciation, you know what I mean? And these guys are my family, I will believe in them. It breaks my heart, but some of the bull crap this town is putting, I am someone who cannot take it, so I gotta hurry. It's just, I'm gonna be knocking heads with somebody. I don't, I don't take light to bullying or lies. So I will believe in this town, and I think this is, was the coolest town I've ever lived in. All right, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dawn. Anyone else in the audience wish to address council?
Yep.
Okay, Pete, we know who you are.
Please.
I'm sure you can all hear me, I'm Katie Pimentel, I am the Communication Supervisor for City Toledo Dispatch. I just want to speak on behalf of the fire department and address that since this has all began, you have stood by each other. You have been wonderful with dispatch, we have not seen a decrease in your responses. You know, there's been no issue in getting in touch with you, you've continued to, you know, contact us and come in and visit and make sure that we're all on the same page, so that we can continue working together. We have no issues with you guys, and we hate that this is happening with everyone, because it's hard on everyone, especially when we don't know the full story. As employees, as your dispatchers, we have seen you drug through the mud, everybody included, and we don't know exactly what's going on, and watching the citizens, sorry, watching the citizens have issues with that as well, and voicing opinions that they don't, they don't know. We don't know. And I don't mean to come across so negatively with you, but something, and I know that only so much can be said, something needs to be said so that people can respond appropriately. But Shannon, Ryan, volunteers, Dawn, I am so sad to see you go, because you have been an asset to this community. Get your shit together, guys, because it's affecting all of us, you know? But thank you for what you guys have continued to do, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Katie.
My name is Miranda Bowers, and I, for a brief time, was part of Toledo Fire. However, I've known quite a few of these people for a while. I've known Larry Robison for going on twenty years, since I was a cadet with Sulet's Fire. I've known this man has given a lot for this community, for his department, for his responders. But I also know that this this department, this, this field is supposed to be a brother and sisterhood. And knowing that it's been ripped apart, I mean, it tears me apart. I don't like the fact that we're fighting, guys. This isn't okay. We're supposed to be fighting the fires and fighting that stuff together. We're not supposed to be fighting each other. Right? This is not okay. We're a team. We're supposed to act like a team. Where's our, where's our brotherhood here, and our sisterhood? That's what we're supposed to be. That's what I came to this field to be. I've been doing this since I was sixteen years old. I'm half forty. This is what I wanted my career to be. I'm starting to question that now, and I don't like that feeling. I'm glad we can all still respond, and, and we can all still serve our community. It gives me purpose still. I just hope it can give all of us purpose still. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just want to put your name up and say.
Brenda. I don't think everybody knows you, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have introduced myself. Brenda Brown, and I live in the Toledo area. And I just want to say that I and many, some of you, have lived through disruption in the city before. And what disturbs me the most is the loss of historic and institutional knowledge that we may be experiencing. And I, I think we need to be very, very careful about losing that with experienced people. And the fire department, I don't live within the city, I have no dog in the fight, but we've had personally episodes where we've had to call on somebody for help. And you know who showed up? The fire department and the volunteers. And then, if necessary, the EMTs. But it was the fire department and the volunteers that were there when we needed them. And all of it takes leadership. And I think we really need to think long and hard about any loss of leadership or how a transition of leadership might happen. So I really support the department, I support volunteers, I support firefighters, the chief, and, and all of their support. And I hope you'll take it very seriously and under a lot of consideration when you make decisions of this magnitude. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone else wish to address council? Lisa, do we have, oh. Come on up. Why, I figured, um, we'd defend the ground first, and then I'll go down the line.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Nicole, I was recently a member of Toledo Fire. I am disheartened that Toledo wants to fire Larry Robison, a man who gave his heart and service to this town.
Ma'am, can you speak up, please, or speak into the mic a little bit more, thank you.
I am disheartened that Toledo wants to fire Larry Robison, a man who gave his heart and service to this town. He always put the health and safety of his responders first, a chief who always had our backs. Larry stood for us against fellow officers who would openly bully and harass members of Toledo Fire Department who did not meet their standards. To dismiss so great a chief, who stands for his responders and almost gave his life and service, would be a grave injustice.
Thank you. Anyone else, yes?
I'm first.
Good evening, my name is Dave Leipoff, I'm the Fire Chief with Sulet's Fire District. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I kind of started thinking I probably should. So let's just enjoy the great relationship with Toledo Fire and East Lincoln County Fire District. We shared borders with East Lincoln County Fire District. We have worked and trained with all these people and responded to fires. But we are, needless to say, just concerned about the dysfunction that's kind of in front of us all right now. As a member of the fire service for thirty-eight years, twenty as a volunteer and with Oregon Volunteer Firefighters in leadership position for a number of years, I can tell you, this all comes back to leadership. It's become personal with a lot of people, which is too bad, but that's what happens. And Chief Robinson, for years, we, I worked with him since I, this is my second tour here. I was here in eleven and twelve, and now I'm back here at twenty-one now. In our, in this time, our relationship has grown quite a bit. We've worked on a lot of different projects together, we've had a lot of conversations. Him and I had conversations about dispatch, and he had those conversations with Chief Pace. He brings a methodical demeanor to his leadership style, and by all fire chiefs, there is no perfect fire chief, we've all made plenty of mistakes. But the role of a fire chief requires to have that balance between consistency and listening to your people, and then also being able to express your feelings. I know Lincoln County Fire Defense Board, and I do not represent them at this meeting, but they have had lots of concerns about how it's affecting all of the county fire service. We also know that we have urged Toledo to become part of Lament Valley Communications, which adds a lot of consistency to how we all respond, and dispatch can watch all vehicles. But that's a separate conversation. So I just wanted, I guess, say I'm in support of Chief Robinson, I wish that things resolve and he can resume the role as fire chief again. It'd be incredibly difficult, I think we all know, to come back into that arena, the way things have gone, and the emotions. I think we all know to come back into that arena, the way things have gone and the emotions. But I personally have been in that situation. I've come back. I know other fire chiefs have. And with the council's support, he'll, he'll exceed, succeed and be able to flourish as a fire chief for his district and department. East Lincoln County apparently has made significant overtures towards separating, and that. While if they have the resources and the infrastructure, we'll be fine. But in the meantime, there's a lot of confusion going on, as you all know. So I just want to say that. Go back to the basics. This is always about leadership and why people are so emotional and feeling off, and great friends are now adverse to each other. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, chief. Anyone else in the audience wish to address council?
I would.
And please sign in on the sheet, please, and then state your name for the record, so you know who we're talking to.
Okay. My name is Haley McGoy. Most of every single person in this room knows who I am. I am the only person in this county that has a child that is in heart failure. Without, without these individuals here, my son would be dead. Okay, I'm getting emotional because I really care about our community. Seattle sucks. Notes. First and foremost, I would like to thank every firefighter in this room. I'm here today to support the fire, our fire chief Larry Robison. If it wasn't for Toledo Fire Department, my two-year-old son wouldn't be alive today. If it wasn't for Toledo Fire Department, my dad wouldn't be alive today. If it, if it wasn't for the help of this fire department. And staff, I wouldn't be standing here today. That, that being said, and this is going to be really harsh, guys. Facts. Do not care about your feelings. I know what is going on here is drama, right? Right? Everybody knows that, okay? The fact is, is that if you don't get somebody, it doesn't have to be Larry. You don't get somebody in charge that all these people respect, you're going to have loss of life. You're going to have loss of life, and it's going to be a community, you know? The point is, is that. You can't have somebody that has three years' experience, whether it be in command, run a whole department. You just cannot. Okay? I'm going to tell you a story, okay? I've had, I've had cardiologists that have had three years' experience tell me that they think that they know what they're, what they know. And it's the senior person that has gone up and beyond, up and beyond. I want you to look at all these faces. Every single person in here, I'm pretty sure, is standing up for Larry today. All these people. Okay, I don't know what this man did, but I know he has saved my family, and he's continuing to train these people and make a great community. And that should matter, and it does matter. And we are all human. We are all human. My two-year-old would not be here today if it wasn't for ninety percent of these kids, these people in here, sorry, the more kids. I mean, you know, like, it's my baby, you know? And personally, the fire department went up and beyond, made to this multiple fundraisers for my child. That means something. This community means something. We are burning it to the ground. We are, with all this drama. I'm serious. It is. Please consider.
Anyone else? Is there anyone online, Lisa?
If there is anyone online who would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand electronically, and you will be recognized. I do not see any hands raised, mayor.
Sir? Does it have to do with fire department? It can be on any topic you wish to discuss at this time, sir, so. Come up, sign your name in, and then let us know your name, and you have three minutes.
My name's Charles Fisher, and I believe it was two months ago I was here about speeding on Lincoln Way. And you apparently all agreed that twenty mile an hour speeds signs would be put up. And I haven't seen any signs.
Thank you for that.
We'll check on that for you. I got where it is in the mix.
So Lincoln Way, a sign just above West Terrace, Arcady, and then Arcady back to, is just twenty. Thank you, beans. I've had two cars in my yard.
You haven't had any since you've been here last, have you?
They're still racing by. That's all I got.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address council this evening?
I have just a quick question. I know I'm.
Sally, sign in.
Late to the party, so I don't know what's been said before I got here. My question, and I totally agree with you when you're talking about drama, because I think that's what this is too. I. Completely understand and agree with that. My question is, this is a rumor that I heard, and I know you probably can't give me an answer now. But since this investigation has started with the fire department, with Larry and Joe, and. I guess all the volunteers that we had that were all fired, which is something else I don't understand, but beyond that. How is it that their places of employment were called and, and informed that they were under investigation? I don't understand how that is right. I don't understand how you, as a group, could condone that. And I'd like to know if it's true, yes or no. And if it is true, what were you trying to accomplish? By calling Joe's place of employment or Kara's place of employment on this investigation?
It's news to me, Sally, so I'm going to find out.
I, I would appreciate it, because all this other drama is, you know, beside the point, but that, to me, is so over the line and inappropriate. And if there's reason for it, then I think we should be able to know that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, we have, got someone online?
Anybody else here?
Oh. At this point, we're just going to keep going.
He needs to be able to speak.
Looks like he's muted.
Yeah, oops, that's down here, sorry.
Back on mute, Daniel.
You're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, yes.
Okay.
Please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Daniel Ammons, so I just want to make it clear that you guys did call my employer, which is inappropriate. That I do want to like to know why you fired people who are on leave of absence. And I would like to know. Oh, last thing is I, I'm an open book. I would be glad to share my results from Shannon Bressick who complained against me to anybody in the public who wishes to see it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sorry, wait.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address council? Russell?
Hello, I'm Russell Hayner, and I've been volunteering with Toledo since two thousand and ten with a few breaks when I got transferred elsewhere. And I just want to say thank you to all the volunteers and everybody that has been. Part of the, part of the department, part of the association, part of the, the whole kit and caboodle. Volunteers have been steadfast. We've, the response has been pretty outstanding for the last, this last year. We, we did have a record amount of, of calls. We have, we've had a, a record amount of participation too, and. I'm just looking, very much looking forward to having this kerfuffle resolved and getting back into. Our focus on full support of the community, full support of our. Of our, of the volunteers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Anyone else?
If there is anyone else online, please raise your hand, speak to the council, and you will be recognized.
I'll go.
Amy, Crystal?
I'm not a good public speaker. I'm not at all.
State your name real quick.
Crystal Swinstrom, for those that don't know me. I've been a Toledo, I was a Toledo volunteer for the last six and a half years. I fell in love with this community, so I didn't move back to Texas. I can say, or a fact, that when I started that fire department. Things were very, very good. I enjoyed it. A lot of people enjoyed each other. Things have changed over the years. The camaraderie. Being able to just show up at the fire department and being welcomed. If you can't give your hundred percent and you have a child. I have been told that I am not as important as other people. I don't know whether that is true. That's just what I'm being told at some points. I can say that I, along with seven other volunteers, received a discharge letter. I don't understand it. We were discharged online before we knew we were discharged. And we found out later about the being discharged. We didn't even have a chance to refute. But accusations were on that letter. That was written by Ryan Harris on a Toledo volunteer. Toledo volunteer fire department letterhead and signed by Amanda. That is very confusing. I don't remember, I don't know whenever a city manager or an interim city manager has the power to fire a volunteer. Or a volunteer can get fired. Being on a leave of absence should be protected. I don't know. Did anybody, did any of you, I'm probably going to go over mine.
Well, we have to, you have to try and stay.
Okay. Did anybody, did any of the council receive leave of absence letters?
We were aware you were on a leave of absence.
Did you receive the letter, though, as to why? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's just say. Seven people got those letters. If you know my husband, he's also included in that same accusation, which we don't know the incidences, the dates, why, who we harassed, who we were disrespectful to. We didn't walk out and join East Lincoln County Fire. We just started responding the week of Christmas. We are up to fifteen volunteers now. Fifteen. Nobody's being bullied. We're not bullying. I can't speak for everybody. But I don't know who's being bullied. I know that we're being held accountable. And talked about because we took a leave of absence. We did not walk away from our community.
Need to wrap up, Crystal.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I don't see any hands online.
Okay, you knew where, you knew where my next question is going to go. Thank you, Lisa. All right, we'll move on. We are at the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the meeting held October second, twenty twenty-four. The executive session held November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. The special meeting held November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And the executive sessions held December fourth, twenty twenty-four, and December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. We have a motion.
I'm going to accept the consent agenda as presented.
We'll keep you as council president by giving Frank. It's been moved by Tracy, seconded by Frank, to accept the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the meeting held October second, twenty twenty-four. The executive session held November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. The special meeting held November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And the executive sessions held December fourth, twenty twenty-four, and December eighteen, twenty twenty-four. I will take a roll call vote. Council Mix?
Yep.
Council Kaufman?
Yes.
Council Keating?
I'm staying.
Council Burns?
You betcha.
Council President Bush?
Yes.
Council Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
And I vote yes. Motion carries six oh one. All right, our first item on discussion decision items is to appoint a council president. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Kim.
Okay, we have a nomination for Kim Bush.
Second, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any other nominations?
Look like you're stuck with a fan.
Yeah, I figured. I figured.
You can ask former Mayor Chambers that this is how it usually always works.
Oh, yeah, I remember it happened once.
I guess.
It's been moved by Frank and seconded by Tracy to appoint Kim Bush as council president.
It was not seconded by me.
Oh, Tracy, sorry, Jackie. Thank you, Tracy.
Does Kim need to formally accept the nomination?
Oh, she's got options?
I have to.
That's, well, that's what a mask is. Does she have?
No.
She has options, but.
I could run away. So.
One amount.
Should I take a permit for the mask? She have to.
All right.
Going for.
It's been moved by Frank, seconded by Jackie Kaufman.
There we go.
To reappoint council president Bush as council president. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, including counselor Bush.
Um, I'm going to make a point of, a point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
In the future, when we vote, we need to actually do a name call.
All right. Thank you.
We learned stuff today.
Yes, we did.
Yes, well, I, I'm just going to make the side comment to that, that I hope they start enforcing it everywhere.
Well, I hope so too.
All right, next item, decision to assign a member to the Solid Waste Consortium Board. So for those of you that didn't know, our former counselor, Stu Strong, was the appointee to the Solid Waste Board. And now he's, and also C WAC. But Frank was covering C WAC. And so we need to fill his big shoes.
He sure loved Solid Waste. He, you know, it's not fair that he gets to retire from everything, though.
Oh, yeah, it is. Trust me, when you get to that point, Tracy, it's all fair. Am I right, Stu? Am I right, Stu?
Might describe what the solid waste is. It's the old dump. Throw me in the solid waste.
Do we have anyone that wants the position before someone gets nominated that doesn't want it? Oh, we have a nomination. Oh, there we go.
I accept the nomination.
Man, Andrew.
Jumping in the solid waste.
Yep.
Now, do you need to assign an alternate as well?
We should.
Because we also need to assign an alternate to CWA, because Stu was the alternate.
All right, so for the solid waste, we have, do we have anyone who wants a volunteer to be done? Yes.
I did not put the alternate on the agenda for tonight, just because currently it's occupied by City Manager Wiggins and just.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, so.
Yeah.
No, I was looking to see if I had to ask for anything else before we did this. It moved by Jackie Burns, seconded by Tracy, to appoint Counselor Keating to our representative on the Solid Waste Board. All those in favor, no correction, will do this the proper way. Take a roll call vote. Counselor Kaufman?
Yes.
Counselor Keating?
Yes.
Counsel Sylvia? Council President Bush? Counselor Mix?
Yes.
Counsel Burns?
Oh, yes.
And I vote yes. Have fun in the solid waste.
Don't take them home again.
I've heard it's a bunch of crap.
All right.
That was the PG version.
Next item, approved resolution number 1566, a resolution recognizing grant revenue and making appropriations for spending for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Yeah, no, he's in the back corner.
He's hiding in here. I saw him coming. There he is.
Well, they didn't teach you.
Yes, please, Kim.
Okay.
Thank you.
You wanna dive into it?
Dive away, Harrison.
All right.
But for people that don't know, give us your name and your department.
Harrison Baker, library director. Yeah, we've got a couple of generous donations here. We've got a $10,000 donation from the family of J.D. Wade, who was one of our good friends, if y'all knew J.D. We are doing a bit of a redesign, making some new spaces inside the library, and we've been talking with his family about putting something in to commemorate him. So they've given us some funds to do that and also to go toward necessary improvements in the library. What we're looking at now for this is to make a space near, near the western section that would be a display area, so that we could partner with some of our other memory institutions, artists, to rotate in museum exhibits, art exhibits, things like that in that, in that space near the windows, and also put in some things in memory of J.D. He was one of our folks who put his initials on the stamp pad of books that he read, so he could keep track, because he read so many. He probably read one of our entire sections at least once. So we'd like to do something that incorporates his initials as well, because he literally left his mark.
What was his favorite genre?
That I can't discuss, because library borrowing it from me.
Confidentiality, okay, okay, got it. Got it. Stick to it, stick to it.
We also have another donation, the amount of $1,000, from Margie and Bill Bars, who also have been very great about supporting us and developing parts of the collection that could really use some extra care. So this year, their donation is designated toward our manga collections. That's Japanese graphic works. Manga is one of these genres that is considered one of the most grueling jobs in the creative fields, because a lot of these are single author things that go are published, you know, they're pretty thick, they're published rapidly, and some of them can go for decades, so getting complete collections is tough to budget for.
And they are not cheap.
So this way, we'll be able, you know, they've got a dedicated readership, so we'll be able to get some complete series, which can hardly come by. That's what I got.
Any questions, council?
Like to make a motion.
Warm it up.
I tell you, I got it going on tonight. I'm going to approve resolution number 1566, a resolution of the City of Toledo City Council recognizing grant revenue and making appropriations for spending for fiscal year 2024, 2025. I second it.
It's been moved by Jackie Burns and seconded by Council President Bush to approve resolution number 1566, a resolution of Toledo City Council recognizing grant revenue and making appropriations for spending for fiscal year 2024, 2025. I will take a roll call vote. Counsel Mix?
Yeah.
Counsel Kaufman?
Yes.
Counsel Keating?
Yes.
Counsel Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Council President Bush?
Yes.
Council Burns?
Yes.
Vote yes. Motion carries 70. We're gonna take a brief recess at this time. We'll be back hopefully in about 10 minutes. All right. We will come back in a session. I do have an update for you. When we go to recess into the continuation of the first executive session, y'all can stay here. We'll go upstairs. Chief Pace will stay here and we'll go upstairs and do it up there and then come back. That way y'all don't have to go out and whatever it is out there now. It was very clear when we came in, and so that usually means call. All right.
You can see several bats from outside.
Oh, aren't they lighting up?
All right, so moving on. All right.
Skipping that one.
So we are now on Department of Environmental Quality report on tests conducted at City Hall. Ma'am.
Mayor Frost and council. So this summer in July, the DEQ was onsite testing the former Texaco site, which is currently the parking lot adjacent to City Hall. Those findings discovered potential human health threats, so we had to do additional testing. The results of those tests showed soil levels that contained gasoline and diesel contamination remains in the vicinity of the former underground fuel storage tanks at the south end of the property. Lisa, you do have a graphic, if you could put that up on the screen for everyone. So gasoline, excuse me, and diesel contamination remains in the soil in the vicinity of the former fuel underground storage tanks at the south end of the property. Contamination, those concentrations were found in the soil to be below risk-based concentration levels. Same in groundwater, gasoline and diesel contamination is present in groundwater near the former tanks. However, the groundwater is not used for drinking. The DEQ found that the concentrations are well below the risk-based concentrations for for human health. The main concern was the soil vapor. Gasoline, another chemical, I'm not gonna attempt to pronounce, Benzy, yes, I pulled that in, and trichloro TCE were found in vapor form when they did the soil vapor testing. That is the main concern at this time. Concentrations exceed the risk-based concentrations for vapor intrusion in commercial buildings. Because of those findings, we immediately did testing onsite at City Hall, because that vapor was found within 10 feet of the building. They did the, they did the testing. At this time, there were no levels with the first test detected in the air, so we are safe at this time for human health. We are allowed to still be in this building to work out of it for the public to be coming in. But because of the contamination of subsurface vapor that could potentially get into buildings and cause a risk to workers, to the public, just potential, we need to do additional testing, and this is normal practice. The next steps are, we will be doing a second round of testing very soon here. DEQ is helping us with this. They've secured, as the handout I provided you, they've secured $60,000 through the Environmental Protection Agency's site-specific assessment funding to help us cover the cost of this further testing. Our major concern at this point is we need to determine the size of the plume. So, right now, the main concern is we still don't know how large the plume is. We need to make sure it's not extending under the building, City Hall. That's our primary goal. After another round of air samples, air changes during the year based on temperature, air pressure, that kind of thing, so we need to do continued air testing but we don't have findings in the air under different conditions. We do need to pull a sample from the soil beneath City Hall, and then we're gonna have to do additional testing using vapor pins. The easiest way to go about it. They're very shallow, but they will give us enough information to determine the extent of the plume. If it's very small and isolated, then we'll likely be able to just close this parking lot site for further construction. We can still use it as a parking lot. There's no risk there. If that is the case, and that is the best case scenario, that's what we're hoping for, then what we'll need to do is just place a proper extension, according on that deed, and that'll just protect it in the future from construction. If there is TCE directly beneath City Hall, we need to determine how far under. We'll have to do additional air sampling. We also need to determine if it extends farther than this building, and of course, that would be more money, so we're hoping that's not the case.
Will this money cover slab testing if needed?
I'm not sure at this time.
I didn't know if DEQ had mentioned.
Not yet.
Thank you.
That's all we know at this time.
What's the difference between the contaminants in the soil vapors and plume? Are they? What's, the plume is the size of the?
Oh, okay. I thought plume was like.
And the vapor intrusion is coming into the building.
So right now, it's not, as far as we're aware. There's no vapor intrusion in the building until we've determined.
Not to a risk level.
Not to a risk level. They didn't detect any on the air sampling.
Who determines risk level? Who sets the level?
DEQ does, I think, over a year.
Yay, yeah. So they're gonna help us, they do have, they're gonna help us obtain grants. Hopefully, if we have more testing to do, there will be funds available, but that's not guaranteed, so there is potential there for more expenses for the city. We know very little at this time. We're just in the very initial stages of testing and just determining what the situation is before we can make any decisions or move forward.
You may not know yet, when I had my house inspected, I know it's a totally different animal, but I was told like with radar that winter's the best time to test, because the windows are closed and the air is cold, so it's easier to capture it in your house. Did they say anything about that, about this? Is it the same situation, like winter is a better time to capture a picture of truly what's going on, or, I mean, you said they want to do it throughout the year.
They wanted to do more samples. They were more concerned with, she didn't say anything about weather or time of year when I spoke with her. It was more just getting multiple reads, because conditions can vary.
It can change.
So.
I'm just hoping if it's the same thing with winter, then this test was probably a clear picture. They just want to make sure. That's what I'm hoping.
It is normal for them to do multiple tests, just to be sure.
Yep, okay.
I think it's because it's soil. Soil temperatures will affect.
And I'm sure moisture.
Lack of a better word, the image.
Well, if it's oily and the ground's wet, then it will rise. Yeah, that all makes sense.
So these pins that they're gonna use for testing, when they do that, there will be pins out in front of City Hall. They're also gonna do it across the street, just to see if it extends that far. So they do have PR persons on staff that can help us with communications to the public to make sure we get the correct information out there. There's no safety concerns at this time. Make sure that we communicate the proper information and get it out there for everybody.
And I'm fully aware you may not have this information yet, but you mentioned, you know, $60,000 of financial assistance already secured, and that there's attempts to find other grant funding to support this work. Do you have sort of a range of best case to worst case reasonable expectation of what kind of costs could be assumed by the city? You know, just, again, very ballpark.
The law requires you to enter into a mitigation agreement, which we have, and if there's not grants, I think we're, we're gonna be stopped with.
I.
Whatever.
Yeah, whatever the cost, we will be responsible, whatever the cost. I can say that.
Best case scenario is that it's limited to the parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay, because if it's not limited to the parking lot, that turns into possible closure of City Hall, possible mitigation of the properties in the surrounding area.
And that will be additional testing, depending on the size of the plume. There could be testing extended to other buildings. For example, that would be worst case scenario if it got across the street, and then we would have to do the testing and sampling in those buildings as well. So I really can't put a figure on it. It could be very limited. It may just be isolated here, and we don't have to do anything further, and that's that. But it could potentially be expensive.
Redirect my question then. Let's say best case scenario is what we're facing, and we don't acquire any additional funding, any additional funding support. What would that, is there, is there an estimate yet on what the best case scenario, not getting into all the thousands of possibilities that could compound the problem? The best case scenario could cost us without any money already secured.
It sounds like best case scenario, if the plume does not extend, the $60,000 should cover the testing they're doing now, and we won't incur any further expenses, aside from potential mitigation, but they did say that because that is a parking lot, as long as we record the restrictions on the deed, that's all we have to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Next item, update regarding the Toledo Dispatch Center.
Yeah, council. The week of January 6th, we had, as you know, we've, we are in talks and in the works with WVCC to transition our dispatch services to their agency, because our city can no longer staff our city can no longer staff a full-time dispatch center, we just don't have, we don't have the staff, it's just not been possible. Uh, we have been actively working with them for that movement, but, uh, last week we had one of our dispatchers go out on an emergency medical leave, it was unpredicted, unforeseen and unfortunate, but you know, our staff needs to take care of themselves, these medical situations arise and we have to move forward. Um, unfortunately, that put us in a very difficult position, um, where we were down to the bare bones as it was, and now we are forced to put a Band-Aid on it to get us through the transition to WVCC. Uh, I got, I was out with the flu over the new year and got back into the office and immediately started working with Chief Pace that week. Having emergency meetings with the, um, state and other agencies trying to see what we can do for help. Um, one of the moves we made was putting out a TERT um, which is a telecommunicator emergency response task force, a TERT request. This is something, um, this is a task force with trained responders who are able to quickly travel and provide assistance to 911 centers. Um, this idea first came about, I had never heard of it, we're learning a lot as we go here. This first started following Hurricane Katrina. Um, and it's basically a statewide ask for help of trained individuals who can help these centers when there, there are emergencies for coverage. So we put that out statewide last week, we did get some responses, um, we got responses from Astoria, they believe they have four dispatchers who can be available to help cover on weekends. And WVCC also put it out at their agency and they believe they have personnel as well. So we're going to be working on getting people to help fill those gaps in our staffing to see if we can get through with the stuff that we have. In addition, this is the handout that I provided you at the beginning of the meeting. Um, Chief Pace made a lot of calls, um, with people in contact, it was two. Um, two trained dispatchers. Who knew about in the area who are able to come in part-time on an emergency basis, so that is the request for council action I provided, we're going to ask permission to hire on-call casual dispatchers, this will be temporary to help fill up again those gaps in coverage to get us through the transition to WVCC. Um, this is, this did entail, um, and rightfully so, I completely understand. Um, they had asked, uh, they had sent a template of their user agreement, this is the standard agreement uh, every agency who is a part of WVCC signs. Um, we had not brought that to council yet because we were waiting for more final numbers, so the initial estimate that is included in your packet, those costs are very preliminary. Um, I didn't want to bring those to you yet because first of all, the state OEM has funds that could be available to help with the transition that they said could cover part of those costs that WVCC is going to be charging for the consolidation. So there would potentially be a lot of offset out there to save us money. Um, on the other hand, that estimate they provided did not, uh, fully include everything that's going to be our all-in costs, so they have not yet evaluated or made a determination if they are going to have to stand up additional equipment and consoles, if they're going to have to hire additional staff for our agency. Um, we do have relatively low numbers for calls, so I don't anticipate that being necessary, but again, it is a possibility, so that could greatly increase that. Uh, so a lot of information is missing at this time. Um, we had to on the fly for them to start putting things in place on an emergency basis to help us get through because Chief Pace was able, able to meet with his team and figure out a schedule to cover us through this Friday the 17th, but after that, we were in a position of potentially having shifts with no coverage, we were desperate. So I did go ahead and sign the agreement so WVCC could start putting technical things in place to start switching things over as quickly as possible. Um, this is a less than ideal situation, this is not how we wanted to go through the consolidation. They have been really great to work with, I will say, uh, they've been very responsive, they're being very helpful. Um, they said normally these type of transitions take seven or eight months, and they're doing this on an extremely expedited basis for our city. So we're very appreciative to all the help and support we're getting from them. Um, our team, our police and dispatchers are working very hard to get everything in place, um, our IT is working hard to get everything in place, and we're going through checklists. Trying to get our ducks in a row as quickly as possible, however, we are going to have additional expenditures paying for these, um, responders from other agencies, we're going to have to pay them hourly wages per diem, mileage for travel, put them in hotels. Uh, it's going to be costly, and then we're going to fill the gaps with on-call dispatchers as well as needed. So, we've got some, some things coming at us fast, we have managed to put what we need in place to make sure we're still providing this critical service for our community, but.
Well, I, I can say that, um, and I know this is going to sound weird because the old mayor in Salem was Chris Floyd and now it's June Boy. Not related. But she has assured me that they're going to stay on top of this as, as much as they can. They understand the, the bind that all of our citizens are in. Um, and so, they want to help as much as they can, so we just got to keep, got to keep talking. Work through this, hopefully the quicker the better, for everyone's sake. Any questions? All right.
I move to approve allowing interim city manager and man to carry the ability that are on-call casual dispatchers to sustain telecommunicator services in Toledo until they are consolidated.
First section.
We have to memorialize this.
I think it's in the mess.
Yeah.
So I mean, you know, we got pictures, banners.
$25, please.
No kidding. All right, it's been moved by Tracy, seconded by Andrew to approve allowing interim city manager and man to carry the ability to hire on-call casual dispatchers to sustain telecommunicator services in Toledo until they are consolidated. We'll take a roll call vote, Councilor Kaufman.
Yes.
Council President Bush.
Yes.
Council Sylvia.
Yes, sir.
Council Burns.
Yes, please.
Council Keating.
Yes.
Council Mix.
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion carries seven zero.
We also need to approve the motion to ratify the signature for the user agreement.
That's where I thought she was going, but we'll come back to it. Hey, next, next item is consideration to ratify city manager potent signature of a user agreement for the Toledo Dispatch Center.
There you go, so moved.
You can't do that.
All right, I make a motion to ratify interim city manager, man to carry signature on a user agreement with the city of Salem's Blalot Valley Communication Center or WVCC for the city of Toledo Dispatch Center operation.
Second.
And I'm giving it to Jack Kaufman. It's moved by Frank, seconded by Jackie Kaufman to ratify interim city manager and man to carry signature on a user agreement with the city of Salem's Blalot Valley Communication Center, WBC, for the city of Toledo's Dispatch Center operation. Take a roll call votes, Council Mix.
Yeah.
Council Keating.
Yes.
Council President Bush.
Yes.
Council Burns.
Yes.
Council Kaufman.
Yes.
Council Sylvia.
Yes, sir.
And I vote yes, motion carries seven zero. All right, next item. Consideration of bonuses for police and fire staff. At this point, I need to turn this over to Council President Bush, and I get to go join the audience.
You do?
Why? Why? Because my son is a member of the police department.
My husband.
Her husband is too. Oh, okay, so, uh, let's see.
Yeah.
So you do.
I'm going to give it to Councilor Mix if she says.
I was going to say, so you'll declare an actual or potential conflict of interest?
Yes, Lisa.
Mayor. What? Which, okay. Y'all.
For the rules and guidelines, when both the council president and the mayor cannot act as the presiding officer, the council must appoint someone.
All right.
So it must make a motion to appoint someone.
You're interrupting.
I make a motion to appoint Tracy as the interim, whatever.
Thank you, Frank. Becky Kaufman has made a motion and Frank is seconded to appoint Councilor Mix to handle this topic. All right, I have to do this by roll call again, Council Keating.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Mix.
Yes.
Council Burns.
Yes.
Council President Bush.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Let's see, who am I missing? Uh, Council Kaufman.
Yes.
All right, yes, and yes, so, seven zero.
I'm recusing myself because.
I would, yes, because he is my son, it becomes an actual conflict of interest. So I now pass it, yeah, well.
Ted, you're it.
Yeah, you can throw it at me later.
Okay.
Um, okay, so, um, first I want to, um, I want to go ahead and read to everybody and email this guy. And, um, it's kind of, she's texting on this, this, and it says, um, I believe this is to this, to this, to entire city council. It says, I seen that on the agenda for the meeting tonight about given Toledo PD and FD bonuses, has the public works ever had any bonuses? I know a few years ago they put thousands of HDPE line in and saved the city thousands of dollars by replacing it, and the bonus was given to the city manager. Why haven't the people actually doing the work been given any bonus or incentives for the work they have done to save our city money? That may be something to think about, and it's, um, is it okay for me to say who sent it? Anyway, that was from Brittany Watford. And, uh, Brittany, if you're out there listening or if you're in here today, thank you. Um, I, I appreciate, um, the recognition of all the hard work that our public works have done. Um, the reason that we are, I brought it to only address the Toledo PD and the, the fire department, um, actually, let me back up a little bit, um, I do not know what bonus she's talking about to the city manager, there was, that, that didn't happen. So, um, anyways, but that's not material, it doesn't matter. Um, she, she's got a very good point, and all of our workers deserve to be paid what they're worth, especially those that have worked extra diligently hard to save the city money, and our public's works certainly have done that. But now backing up, the reason that I'm addressing the Toledo PD and the fire department. Last July, um, our other, our, our public works and our other workers that are covered under that same umbrella received cost of living adjustments, they had their pay negotiated, that was done last July. The fire department has not had that. Our fire department, our police department and our dispatchers have been under an unreasonable amount of workload and unreasonable amount of stress. They are all underpaid, vastly underpaid, uh, compared to any others in, in any city, even the same size. And because we are so understaffed, we have room in our budget to do this, to give them bonuses, to not only show our appreciation, but also to show them how important they are to us. We will be addressing pay raises for these individuals or in the collective bargaining as it happens this coming July, I think it starts much earlier than that. I, I may have already started, I'm not certain, but but recognizing all of their hard work and the fact that we actually do have the money in the budget because of these empty positions, I feel very strongly that we need to give them some sort of a bonus. Now, saying that, the budgeted amount for these positions that I'm talking about, just in the police department, this is the police detectives, the officers, these are the police that are not, they're not department heads. And we budgeted $1,055,500 for those positions, just in the police and dispatch. Thus far, the approximate actual that we have spent on those positions is 700, or are going to spend within this budget cycle is 716,000, that is almost a $340,000 area of funds that have been allocated and budgeted to these salaries that we could use to give bonuses. Fire department is included in this, not only also because we want to show them, so we also appreciate them, but because we kind of need to do them all at once, you can't really do the police department and the dispatch without doing fire too. It, it, you just really can't, it wouldn't be fair. What I am proposing is to the city council for us to make this consideration as to whether, you know, what kind of bonuses we'd like to give them. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not dead set on the amount, um, I know when it was discussed earlier, miss, or Chief Pace mentioned a 3% bonus. I don't feel that's enough. Um, just, and, and I want to throw these numbers out for you, so it's 5% of just the police portion, 716,443 dollars is 35,822 dollars. That's 5% of the police and dispatch budget. Or the, there, it would be a 5% bonus on top of their income, that's an approximation, it's, it, it might go up slightly or down slightly. Fire, that same computation is 11,750 dollars. We have the money to do this. We have it in the budget to actually do this, I am proposing that we do it. And I want to open this up for discussion with city councilors. I don't know if you want to ask the pu- the public for any of their opinions on this matter, or any input from anybody, um, but, um, does anybody, or how would we do that? Do we discuss, I think we give them time to.
I think you open it up for.
So I'm going to open, go ahead, Lisa.
My suggestion is maybe the council have their discussion first.
Okay.
Once you exhausted your discussion, we open it up for public comment.
How does that sound?
I might, I might prefer personally to do it the other way around, so that we can hear from the public to help inform the conversation we have.
Yeah. Okay, so right now I'll open it up for public comment.
But you go.
And does anybody here want to comment on this or make any suggestions or comments, I mean, just anything, if, if you guys have anything to say about it, we want to hear.
There is someone online who would like to.
Great.
So let me allow them to talk.
Cheryl? You should be able to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's, uh, Cheryl Duprah, and I just wanted to, uh, make a comment to your suggestion, Councilor Mix. Um, is, are you proposing to do this in the strike-prohibited um, unit with the police and fire for people that are covered under that agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and so, um, I don't know if you've run this by the union, the union representative, or if you've considered that this could set a precedent, and normally this, something like this could be done, I think, through a memorandum of understanding that, um, modifies the current agreement because they do have a current working contract, I believe, and I'm not totally certain on that, but I think there are some mechanics that, um, you might want to also consider as it ap- impacts long-term negotiations within your bargaining unit.
So Cheryl, we're not proposing giving them a raise, we're proposing simply giving them a bonus.
I understand that, um, but I, I think that when you're talking about those kinds of contracts to err on the side of protecting yourself and the city during negotiations, and I don't know for sure, I, I'm not opposed to it at all.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just kind of tired of excuses for us not giving the fire department and police what they deserve, so.
There's a memorandum of understanding that can be executed.
Okay.
With, that I can contact the union attorney, the union can vote on it and agree that it's non-precedent setting.
Great, Lisa.
Um, I just wanted to recognize that we're kind of having a discussion on Mr. Pro's time, so I.
Yeah, sorry. Cheryl, were you done?
Well, I can be, I, I just was concerned, um, I've done uh, bargaining unit negotiations, and I know when you start putting a pie on the table, there's no such thing as backwards negotiation. And I wanted to make sure that you weren't putting us in that position where we would have to include that in the part of the pie when you're sitting at the bargaining table, and I am not saying that these people do not deserve a, a bonus or anything like that, I'm saying procedurally, I think that it's important that even though we have good hearts, that we do it in the right way so that it's protecting the city as well. That's it.
So then, to my understanding, we need what you said. Before we can.
So, so Council Burns, you don't necessarily need it now, I think whatever motion you make can be conditioned on approval by the union. So, so Councilor Burns, you don't necessarily need it now. I think whatever motion you make can be conditioned on approval by the union. That it's a non binding action.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And, and, and then your motion should also specify. You know, is it five percent, three percent for this fiscal year? Is it? You know, who's included, who's not, that.
Does anybody else want to say anything?
I would like to. Again, my name is Shannon Bressick and I'm a fire captain with Toledo Fire Department. Um, I'm very appreciative of the council's thoughts and wishes and obviously for all my colleagues, I would like that to go forward. Um, but I would like you guys to think about the fire department side. Uh, the two of us that are on staff, we do not do it alone and we cannot do it without our volunteers. So I would like you guys to consider some sort of compensation to the volunteers. Um, and if you have to, whatever you decide to give us, you can give mine to the current on roster Toledo volunteers. Because we're not doing it alone. We're not doing it without them. There is no way that we are doing this without them. They are just in this dogfight with the rest of us and they're there standing right there next to us. So they do deserve some. I, I don't, I can't tell you what they deserve. I can't tell you how much they deserve. I can't tell you how to give it to them. But you cannot do this without including the volunteers that are doing the same thing that we're doing. And they're doing it for free. If that is their choice, yes, but they're still doing it for free. And they're still there serving the community right along with us.
How many current on, how many volunteers do we currently have on the rosters?
So currently on the roster, there's twenty-two. Not all of those are in a response mode. Um, we do have those numbers for you for later in the department head meeting, but we can get them out for you. Um, there is fourteen. I forgot the numbers.
Twelve.
Twelve, uh, firefighters. And then there is, I think the rest then would be support. There are some EMS responders too, but. And our support personnel are, are right there along with us, um, but they don't, don't respond. So you're probably looking around eighteen, eighteen between medical and fire responders. I would just like you guys to consider something for them because I think it's wrong for us to accept something and them not have an option for anything. I appreciate your time.
Anybody else?
I'm gonna say something.
Before she starts, can I just put out a reminder for side conversations in the audience, um, be withheld? Because for the people online, it's hard for them to hear and the microphones pick up everything and so it comes out horrible.
So one of the things that I learned when I was in the meeting, uh, just recently is that it costs around five thousand dollars per volunteer to be equipped in order to respond appropriately to a call and they don't have the equipment. So that may be something for the volunteers that you can do is actually buy them the appropriate.
The equipment?
Uh, the volunteers.
East County or Toledo?
Uh, I was just told that there are probably both. So you need to do a head count and make sure. So you're saying you've got all the equipment that.
I believe Toledo has all their equipment. I don't think that's a true statement.
And so then because we've locked out the east county and that was running out of there, you have no obligation to.
My feeling is, my personal feeling is no.
That's not, that's not the legal. Okay, that's not the legal.
I would leave the legal part to our attorney.
Okay, then I'll call him tomorrow. Thank you. Like your house cats liar.
My name is Perry Rooster, post patrol deputy for seventeen years. I would highly encourage you to increase the amount to your dispatch. Over and over again, I went to your dispatch and they are amazing. They've always been amazing. All of them, the ones that retired, the ones that have quit. All of them have been super, super sweet, super, super awesome, super responsive, and I commend them. And I commend that department for what they've done. And I believe they're the ones that should be deserving of an increase.
Do you have anybody else? Any hands online raised?
Um, I'm the reason that we're currently out because it is going on. This is what happens when you stress shit out of your employees and when you don't have staffing. Right, you can't even sign it.
You don't have to sign it again, so.
You don't, we don't need to sign you any again, you're good.
I don't want to piss the place to the time, but yeah, I'm gonna say thank you for finally recognizing what should have been done a long time ago and at the same time. And now when you finally have the opportunity, I don't know where the hell you went, but. Oh, seriously? The first meeting, when you found out about this, you fucking yelled at us.
Yes, you did.
You yelled at us. We sat out here begging for you, seducing before us, and you yelled at us. And it didn't get a whole hell lot better in the second meeting. So, dare you? I have two staff members, a part-time on-call person that are currently busting their asses. Make sure that this community is still. Honestly, this is something that should have happened a long time ago. We didn't have the right cap system to keep up with what we needed to do with Willamette Valley. Your responses, your ability to talk to your other police departments, it would, it just would have benefited you to do this a long time ago. And I'm happy that it's finally happening, but what it's done to us, I mean, my marriage wasn't perfect, but I don't have a ring anymore. Here and I separated like nine months ago. That sucks, I'm never home. Horrible. And so thank you for finally doing something, but at the same time, I'm so ashamed of what's been going on. I fear that it might have worked my last dispatch and I've been doing this for twenty years. All of us are losing our careers. We're no longer going to be dispatchers. Wendy won't be a dispatcher. She'll be property and evidence. She didn't come into dispatch to be property evidence technician. Colton didn't come in to be a records clerk. He came in to be a dispatcher. They're all struggling. I want you to know that we're still fighting to keep you all safe and answer your calls. So thank you to those who have supported us to our fire department. I want to thank my staff and the people. It's just so long overdue.
Do you have anybody else who would like to comment, say anything?
So are we, are we addressing this as a decision item or a discussion item?
I'm, I'm. That's. Oh.
It's a discussion. I have one, I have one question for the city manager and city attorney. Um, I absolutely appreciate, um. Very new to remembering everyone's names, but Chief Bressick's, uh, comments, um, about the volunteer firefighters, I'm curious about our ability to do that and whether, and I'm thinking about employment classifications and our ability to compensate volunteers based on their classification, if that's something with collective bargaining or whatever factors go into that, the actual ability of the city as an employer to. So could you speak on that a little bit? If, if you have that available.
Think a little bit, kind of related, uh, the fire district is a separate public body formed, uh, under R O R S, I think it's chapter four fifty-seven. Uh, but it's a rural fire protection district. They have an intergovernmental agreement with the city to provide service in the district boundaries. They're, they're, they're no, they're its own, its own public body, its own permanent taxing district. Their tax revenue, they pay us money to cover the district. Um, some of the.
From the previous comments.
Oh, yeah. They are, I don't know the answer to the question. In, in some ways, they should be treated like employees. And in other ways, they're not. So I, I.
And that's, and that's fine. If you don't have the answer, I'd prefer not to.
I, I don't, I don't have the answer.
So we do, yeah, the vol- we do have mechanisms, you know, we can always pay somebody as, you know, if they're just accounts payable, it wouldn't be payroll. The volunteers obviously are not on our payroll. They're not hired as employees, but there are ways if council chooses to award some kind of, we'd probably call it a stipend, or we can come up with whatever we want to call it.
A volunteer fund.
That, uh, could be, we can, you know, we can find ways through accounts payable to pay something to a vendor. Um, we'd have to look into the best way to do that.
Could our decision item for this discussion be to ask the city manager to prepare a proposal of some options for how we can provide a bonus?
And perhaps I, I. It'll be different, it'll have to be.
So you're talking for volunteers?
Well, I, and I mean, just in general to say, to ask our interim city manager to, uh, to provide us with a proposal of some options of.
I would like to do this in two parts.
Yeah.
And, 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 um, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine.
I think we should handle the police dispatch and fire as one.
Yes.
And the volunteers is another one.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm proposing.
Should be separate.
I'm proposing that we give police dispatch and fire a five percent bonus. Um, as far as the volunteers, I'm not sure. I don't want it to be insultingly low, but I do agree that they shouldn't be left out in the cold.
Oh, hello.
Um, I, I, I think it's high time you start showing a little bit more appreciation for the people that actually stand in that line for our citizens.
So can we move with the motion for that?
Do you want to make a motion or, or do you want to talk about it a little bit more?
I would like to talk about it just a tiny little. Um, one question that I do have is from the budget perspective, and this is just I one thousand percent agree with what we are trying to accomplish. That's not where this is, that's not where this is coming from. What this is, where this is coming from is I know that we've had a lot of challenges and a lot of these difficulties are based on recruiting challenges and not being able to fill positions and retain positions. Now, I'm being super speculative. But in the event that some miracle were to happen and there were to be a person to say, you know what? I want to work at the Toledo Police Department.
Praise the Lord.
Right?
Oh.
I want to be certain that we have the financial capacity to hire that person, you know, we aren't exhausting that capacity.
We are not exhausting it.
That's my, that's my.
So we have a three hundred and forty thousand dollar
Buffer.
Buffer.
Okay.
That's, we budgeted one over one million and our approximate actual is, is less than seven hundred and twenty thousand. So we have a, a, a very good buffer to cover not only the five percent bonuses, more than enough for that, but also if we were able to somehow also use that buffer to, um, to cover volunteers. My, I have a question though, when we're talking about volunteers. Does the police department also have volunteers that work regularly, like fired? No.
Thank you for answering that, goes.
So I wasn't going to cheer for you to hear this if the volunteers weren't included. I, I'm just being frank with you because we may have strikes out there, but everybody else under them are out there getting into that fire. They're out there responding to calls. They're out there saving people's lives. Um. I don't remember who said it, but we could not do this without them longer, so we need to figure something out.
What, what, what does our fiscal year run? June to June.
July first to June.
My first, yeah, okay. I think that we need, yeah, so we need to separate.
Yes, yes.
It has to be separate from the contractual and the volunteer.
Well, and that way again, we have time for somebody to get ahold of the union rep and find out if we can actually do this. So can we do something important about you? Non-volunteers today and bring the volunteer parts back up.
Yes, Chief.
Chair, chair, it was me, it was me. Um, I would recommend that your motion be conditioned on approval by the union, that it's a not binding precedent.
Okay.
And Chief Pace, you have your hand up.
Yes, please include those people that are not in the contract, be it sergeant, dispatch advisor.
I did have those included.
Okay, we were talking about.
No, no.
Just wanted to share.
Oh, oh.
I was just saying paid employees. I did say contractual, but I meant the paid employees. Cause I know that some are not contractual, but it's still paid.
Okay. And I would just like to clarify, if you say five percent, um, do you mean five percent salary? But ongoing five percent bonus because that's.
No, just one time. Just one time. It's a one-time bonus.
Of their annual salary.
Because here in July, they should all be getting raises. And we don't know what that looks like yet. So we don't want to do something ongoing that would commit us to something ongoing. A one-time thing isn't likely to cause an ongoing thing and I think easier, at least from my perspective, for the union to say, oh yeah, this is not a contractual obligation.
Yeah, it's very different if we were going to do, for example, a five percent salary increase through the end of the fiscal year, that would include all their overtime.
Not a salary increase.
Okay.
I just want to clarify. No, not a salary increase because that would cause problems.
Yes.
Cause we have to, that has to be done.
We had, uh, Katie had put her hand up.
Katie?
Um, I do want to make sure that if for any reason this, I know you said it includes Erin and myself, but if for some reason it can't, I think I can say take care of our people.
I included your guys' numbers in with my figures.
Okay, second part of this is, and I don't mean to be, I'm off super selfishly, but we have some really new people who haven't tasted an ounce of what the last almost seven years have been like, because this is not something that is new. This is something that we have been through time and time again, and it's, it's finally coming to a head and it's sad that it had to get to this part, but there are those of us who have endured so much more than this and I'm, I speak for, the host Erin's been here for fifteen, fourteen, whatever, I'll be here for seven years. This is, this is something that's not new to us and we have been through hell and we have given everything, so. I don't know how you want to separate, I don't want to feel like I'm more deserving than anyone else, but this is not something that's new, so whatever your five percent means to our salary or whatever, that's thank you for the bonus, but at this point you can all just shove it because the damage is done.
I won't be shoveling. It does not have a flare base. Um, it's dangerous, I'm told.
So I, one of the things that concerns me right now is more about the technicality of how we're going to vote of this and what we're ultimately directing our city manager to do. It seems like there are quite a few technicalities to how we have to execute this. And so I'm currently feeling as though the vote that we should be taking is ultimately to direct the city manager to spell out for us, to figure out the specific mechanics of this, to propose to us to vote on in our next meeting.
Do you mean for the five percent bonuses or for the volunteers?
For the five percent bonuses. Because we can, we can approve the five percent bonuses, but my concern is we are approving something that might have certain mechanisms.
But that's why we leave it subject to.
That MOU, that MOU could be brought for you for approval next month if that's.
So we can leave it, yeah, subject to the approval. And so we can get the, the ball in motion and then if for some reason the union comes back and says no, well, then we know we need to take a different tack.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Is everybody, I mean, I, I don't know how we're feeling about this. I mean.
Oh, so I, I, I'm kind of getting the feeling we want to do the five percent. Um, does anybody want to do more than five percent?
I'm not a numbers person, I just want to make sure that they feel appreciated and they should.
Want to know what that actually looks like, because if my salary this year was over thirty thousand dollars of overtime, which is disgusting, is it what we made? Is it, I mean, I look at that, they're looking at five thousand dollars and the state's gonna come and they're gonna take half of that, and I'm gonna walk away with twenty-five hundred, it doesn't. Money doesn't even back. It's a problem.
So Katie, I understand your frustration and I love you there, but we are trying to do what you asked us to do.
And I'm just frustrated.
It, it's in recognition that it's too little, too late. Really.
It's really painful right now.
Clear, and you know.
And I appreciate you guys so much, I really do, but I'm. Anchor is just, this where this is coming from is because I am.
So with that being said, then maybe if, if. More than five percent is a possibility, then maybe we need to crunch some numbers and come up with something that's.
Okay, well, let me tell you what ten percent looks like, ten percent looks like seventy-one thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty cents for the police department. And twenty-three thousand five hundred for the fire department, so just under a hundred thousand. And then, so that still leaves us with a two hundred and forty thousand dollar difference. Now granted, those are not carved in stone numbers. It's like she said, there's overtime to consider and other things, if that's what we're considering.
Is it based on, uh, ten percent of what their base salary is or what they earn? I mean, there's a big difference.
There can be a big difference there, um.
I think five percent on earning.
You want to do five percent on earnings?
Can I ask where the money from two thousand twenty-three and twenty-two and twenty-one and nineteen and all those other years are, where's that, where's that rollover? Cause this is the first time that we had three people or four people, we were down like.
Katie, this is all overdue.
I just want you to answer as much as I do right now, and it's like, I'm so sorry. I want the city to find me fields, but we're failing because it ignored us for so long, and not just dispatch, but. The police department, we're all in the same position, we came to you. Sorry, I say you, but the council in general, so many times asking for help and trying to. Bring the, what the issues were to us, to get rejected time and time again, we don't have the money, we don't have the money, and I get that, but then at the same time, I stood before you three years ago. On the brink of driving off a fucking cliff and said. Let us go, if you can't afford us, let us go before more happens, it's exactly where we are, I told you it was gonna happen, I told you it needed to happen, this is where we are now. And it's frustrating. There are people who are on the brink of breaking down, and I feel like I failed, and I haven't, and I busted my ass, and I feel like I failed.
Baby, at, at this point. There is nothing that we can do at this point. And, you know, just, I, I remember the meeting when you showed that. I remember that, and I, I, that's when I went down to dispatch to, what the hell is going on?
You took interest and you came and saw, you have no idea what's on it to us.
Moving forward, we have to do what we can as a city council to prevent that from happening again. And I'm sorry for the hell that you've gone through, but, you know. This is where we're at.
I know, I just wanted, I just want it out there.
It is out there, it is.
It's been a problem for a long time. And there's those of us who are no longer with the agency who have suffered as well, and we're just happen to be. Shit that's left in the building, a dumpster fire, as we've all called it, that's what we are, we're just a giant dumpster fire.
More to us now, so. So then where are we at in terms of?
I think five percent makes a lot of sense, I, I think that's great, I think we would need these specific language. Um. See, hand up, I'm just, are we, are we starting, I just want to be.
Go ahead, Jim.
I just want to speak about volunteers.
Come up to that point, please, thanks.
Write your name down, Jim. Thank you.
I, I realize I'm a little older than what I used to be, but, uh, I was in the volunteer fire department, and I spent eleven years there. And at that time, the city had a, um. A fund that was, was in, included within the fire department to pay volunteers, but not actually pay them.
Yeah.
In other words, it was a, pretty much a contribution that went to them.
That was if you were getting fifty cents a call, right?
Oh, no, I got a little worn out. But what I'm saying is that, um. One of the things that shouldn't be considered is what that is in the budget now. And it was until I got off the budget committee, but I don't know what it is now. But maybe you should look at that, and yes, I paid my old boots too. Um. I had to pay for my, my blue shirt, you know, and everything else. But, you know, that, that should be something that should be looked at, and it should be continued, but maybe, I think back then it was thirty thousand dollars, but.
Well, I know they're still, that we're not talking about replacing that or doing this in, in place of that, because they still get. Their stipend for going on their calls, we don't want to take that away.
No.
As it's almost insulting as it is, um.
Tracy, I want to make sure we're not using up his time, but he has only three minutes, I just want to make sure, that's all right, no comments? You can use it up.
I'm looking for fire here, okay. The volunteer program had sixty-one thousand dollars. Um, is what we budgeted for the volunteer program. Maybe as we're looking at the volunteer, we can see how much is still in there, and, um. And what it would look like, what kind of numbers.
That's something that the fire department is still, the volunteers, which hasn't, an organization within the department can handle. But I mean, they usually give out a monthly, what, how much you made every month.
I think they do it every year, once a year. Am I wrong? Cause they do it once a year?
Usually annual.
Yeah.
Right, it was a nice Christmas fun. And it was supposed to, you know, cover your uniforms, it's supposed to cover your, you turn up. Any time of the day, and then you get back home and your shirt smells like smoke and. You want to crawl back in bed because you only got three more hours of sleep available. Get in that bed and you smell like a burnt fire, that's really nice. But, you know, it's also was intended, you know, to help pay for even the gas going to the, to the party month.
Until gas went out.
You know, and there, there is a reason for it, it should be looked at. My time's up.
Thank you.
Um. Okay. Right, five percent percent.
I knew there's enough in my opinion, but, I mean, I guess it all depends upon what you're looking at, because if we go after their overtime, that's really not.
Yeah, it would really, to be fair, it would really need to be on base salary, because the overtime's gonna fluctuate by employee and position, so that's.
So I'm almost feeling like ten percent of base salary, not five percent of the whole thing. And I think that would be more consistent, and that would actually fit with my numbers better.
Um, yeah, overtime is budgeted separately.
Yeah.
What were your numbers on Tim?
Hundred percent, I'm looking at. Okay, ten percent is about a hundred thousand, now that would not be including the volunteers, that's gonna be something different, but we still have about two hundred and forty thousand. That we can play with essentially, um, of course, you know, we have other money, we have money in reserves, and we have. Some unappropriated surplus and stuff like that, that if we really needed to, we could move things around, and. And I understand we're gonna need to do a supplemental budget anyway, so we can reallocate things as we need to, if we need to, for anything minor.
So can, can we just make a motion for ten percent, once all of the. Details get ironed out so that we're legal, and just do it that way, and. Kind of, I meant that, it's, I mean, you know, that's a hit boat.
Is the council taking any more comments? I do have two hands raised online.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Jonathan, I'm gonna unmute you first, and then I will, um, let Cheryl throw. Jonathan, you should be able to speak now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go for it.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Garrison, I am a volunteer with the Toledo Fire Department, I do have a couple questions, first question. Is, uh, the money that was supposed to be going to the Eastling County Volunteer Association, is that? Been taken away from that, uh, association?
Can you repeat that, Jonathan? I'm sorry.
You're good, so the, there was money, the sixty thousand dollars that was going to the association to pay the volunteers, the stipend. That, my understanding was not, or was stopped, given to the association because of the issue between the association and the fire department.
We're talking about sixty-one thousand dollars that we budgeted last budget, so that's different, different money than you're talking about. You're talking about something different.
Okay, because someone said that we are still getting a stipend of the four dollars a call, which we're not, because the association's having some issues. And we're not, the association's not getting that money.
Well, I really hope that we can get that, that can get resolved by the departments pretty soon, because that's a four time.
Okay, and then my other questions, I believe it was the city lawyer was talking about the difference between the volunteer and the city department. I just want to make sure that, I'm, my understanding, the volunteers with the city of Toledo Fire Department is part of the fire department and not part of the district.
I believe.
Under. Unless they're under the association.
You're talking about volunteers of the city of Toledo, not east county volunteers.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I, there was a confusion there, I just want, on my end, so I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl? Unmute her really quick, okay, Cheryl, you should be able to speak.
Um, I can if you can hear me. Um, I'm calling because there's some procedural things that my understanding is with the fire department. Is when the city budgets that money that goes to the fire department, that provides a firewall between the actual city management and the volunteers. By which they get their stipend, and so when you're budgeting that money for the stipends, that's that, I think it's sixty-one thousand dollars you're talking about. Right now, and that goes to the combination department, which is Toledo Fire, is a combination paid volunteer department. And so that's meant to be managed by fire department leadership. It's not meant to be managed by the city council per se, is my understanding, and I could be wrong. But there, I believe there's supposed to be a firewall between you guys, so that there's no, um. Appearance that they are the vol-, um, employees of the city, and so we. When you fund that line item, that's the line item that allows the fire department to provide the stipend. To the volunteers now, I think that the fire department can make those decisions to bonus the volunteers. Out of that fund, if that fund is flush. But for you guys to, I think it might not be good for you guys to get in the weeds. And sort of break those barriers down as the city council, and, uh, distributing money. That's meant to be, um, you guys are meant to have a firewall between you all. That's all.
Um, I don't think that we would suggest paying it out of that line item.
No, we would.
That's not the suggestion.
No, we're not talking about taking any of that money, we were just looking at where it is, can we put more money maybe there, or how are we gonna do it? We're gonna have to shift things around to do it, Cheryl.
That's what I was saying is, to me, to make it, to make that a clean process, you would. If you wanted to kick more money into that fund, but ultimately the fire department would need to do that through the association. And, and because they're like ten ninety-nine employees of the association, not of the city. Is my understanding historically, and Tracy, you are way better at taxes than I am, um, so.
Your ten ninety-nines.
Um, I believe come from the city of Toledo.
And I think the associations voted to dissolve at this point.
Yeah.
So, that, I don't think that would be the mechanism that we would use. To recognize the volunteers.
Stay on task, I think the expectation is that tonight we are focusing on the paid employees with the expectation that. At a future meeting, we will address compensation or something that we can do to recognize the extraordinary services of volunteers.
Man, do you think you can bring us some ideas for the next meeting about how to do that? Can we put that on the agenda for next week?
I think so, and I, I would suggest, um, if you would like, if you all feel comfortable and have made a decision and would like to approve. Uh, your time's up, yeah, a percentage bonus, um, for the paid stuff this time. You can do so, and we will work out the mechanics, and if there's like an M O U or something to bring back to you, we will do so.
I think we would just, I think we could just.
Can just run the.
And then we'll bring back information pertaining to the volunteers to the next meeting, right?
I just want to make sure we have a very specific motion.
Yo.
Are you gonna make a motion for us?
I will, uh, we gotta handle it.
Poised way to say this, um, I know we're talking base salary, and I'm only just, because I'm just digging. Um, that's my value to you, this is what my base salary is, is what we put in. Each put in a little bit different, a little bit more than the other. Pay us what we worked. That's what I'm asking for, because I, I busted my ass.
Okay, I make your choice, you get five percent of what you work, or you get ten percent of what your base salary is, guaranteed ten percent of your base salary is gonna be more.
So I'm gonna bring it to us. That's my, that's my, that's my feeling, I want to know what it looks like, I want to know, I want you to get them. That's leftover.
My name is Brave Rooster, I've always been blank, frank with you guys. You have a gallon of gasoline and you're dancing around a bonfire right now. I think you need to direct the city manager to explore this further, and that's all. No percentages, no nothing, just ask her to look into it, that a way we can take all these considerations in, because if you make a decision right now. This is, could be explosive for you, okay, so.
I appreciate your comment.
I would entertain a motion.
All right, I make a motion to approve the ten percent for the paid employees for the fire dispatch. And police department for the next fiscal year, contingent on approval by the union rep that it is a non-binding. That's the last word?
Precedent.
Precedent.
For the next fiscal year?
For this fiscal year, sorry.
Wait, for one time bonus for this fiscal year, I said.
All right, do I need to redo that?
Yeah, can you go ahead and re- redo that?
Okay.
So we have it clear, we want, we want Lisa to be able to get it very clear in the minutes.
Ten percent bonus. Or be a word out, your ten percent.
I make a motion to approve the ten percent one-time bonus. For the paid employees for this fiscal year contingent on approval by the union rep that it is a non-binding precedent.
For police.
For police, fire, and dispatch.
It has been, um, moved by Frank and seconded by Jackie Burns, Council Burns. And, um, to give the police, fire, and dispatch a ten percent bonus. Um, of their base salary, dependent upon. That thingy.
Union renditioned on approval by the union, that it's a non-binding precedent.
That. Um, and, um, let's do a roll call, um, Counselor Sylvia.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
You betcha.
Counselor Katie.
Absolutely.
Counselor Kaufman.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, noting the abstention of Mayor Cross and Counselor Bush.
And the motion carried.
And the motion carries, thank you.
Are we going into executive session?
Yes.
Rod's got a close to me.
Oh, okay. And now, I believe we are gonna go into executive session, you're gonna, Rod's gonna do that, you're taking your hand. And now, I believe we are gonna go into executive session. You're gonna rock some of that here, take your hand.
Okay, at this time. So that, at this time, so everyone is clear. Okay, we have moved the authorize and city manager pro temp, uh, action on specific employee. We have moved that to after. The conclusion of this executive session that we are gonna leave the room and go up and take. You all can stay here. There's drinks in the cooler if you want some. Best we can do at this point. Um, and we'll be back as soon as we are complete. So at this time, I'm going to recess the, um, the open session. Right. We are back in regular session. We will now take up. The item to authorize the city manager pro temp to remove a specific employee. If warranted, as required by city charter, chapter five, section twenty, subsection seven.
Mayor Council, I'll just give a little bit of background. Uh, per the city charter, that's the. Uh, you can say the constitution of the city, that, that's voted on by the voters, um. Municipal Court Judge, the city attorney and the city manager work for the city council. Uh, everybody else per the charter works for the city manager. And we don't have a, uh. When we have an interim or pro temp city manager. The city, the city charter that in- impacts that normals, what normally occurs. The city charter, chapter five, section twenty, subsection seven. Provides in part, a city manager pro temp shall possess the powers and duties of the city manager. Except that the manager pro temp may appoint or remove personnel only with the approval of the majority of all the members of council. So, the. Although it is ultimately the interim city manager's. Decision what discipline is appropriate, the council under this clause can withhold the authority. For the pro temp to have the ability to terminate an employee. Because at this time, no decision's been made by the city manager pro temp. Interim city manager, those terms can be used interchangeably. The city council and the city manager pro temp have received a presentation of the executive summary of the investigation report. Uh, uh, of one of the investigation reports, this is a, this is, that, that has been ongoing in the city. This is a personnel matter, so the, um. So we can't speak on it. And, um, staff and council have been. Actually, did not mention, confirm, or acknowledge who, the identity of who this, um. Resolution is, is about. And for that, I would, there's, there's a motion there that you can.
Do we need to move for the opposite?
Yes. So, I'm gonna exercise, I don't normally make the motions, I'm going to make the motion this time. I move that we do not authorize city manager pro temp carry to remove a specific employee. If warranted, as required by city charter, chapter five, section twenty, subsection seven. You got to let the machine gun fire.
Give it to Tracy.
I'm gonna give it to Jackie Burns.
Oh, she didn't say it.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you very much.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Jackie Burns. Who moved to not authorize city manager pro temp carry to remove a specific employee. If warranted, as required by city charter, chapter five, section twenty, subsection seven. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Mix?
I say yes, right? Yes for no, yes for no.
Counselor Keating?
Yes.
Counselor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Burns?
Yep.
Counsel President Bush?
Yes.
And I wholeheartedly vote yes. Alright. That concludes our discussion and decision items this evening. Uh, do we want to go into the other session now, or go through reports and comments first?
I move to.
We will skip reports and comments.
Can we give it a brief opportunity for anybody in the audience that would like to speak to something really quick? To say something if they would like to?
Can we reset the timer to one minute? Because earlier, we were, we did that for an hour and five minutes, so, yeah. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council at this time?
Uh, just, uh, thank you for, uh, all the effort you've been into.
Yeah, you got so.
You gotta sign in and state your name, sir, whoever you are.
Thank you, uh, I guess for all your efforts in, uh, in considering the report and everything and working with us through this. And, uh, being there for the future, everything that comes with it. We'll move forward. The department was here before, it'll be here after. We'll keep going with it. We got some of the best, as you know, so. Appreciate it, and appreciate everybody else that's here to match.
You wanna task him, or you want me to task him?
No, I just, I started to open my mouth and say, anyone else?
I'm someone else.
Anyone else want to address council?
Good job.
Anyone online? Alright.
Yay.
Probably have one to bed.
So, at this time, we'll do quickly council comments. And then we will move into a, another executive session, but that will be the end of our business this evening with the end of council comments. Alright, I will start with Councilor Mix.
So. City's still a mess. And while there are seven of us up here. It, it, it takes you guys to. Part of putting our fire department back together and part of making these amends and, and fixing where we are. Is gonna be everybody coming together and working together to do it. This is not on just one person or two people, or the city council, or the city manager. It's all of us. And. I just wanted to, to remind us all of that.
Counselor Kaufman? Counselor Keating, welcome to the council.
Thank you. Um, and I'm preparing, I can't even think about this, but. No, not short for words, but I do want to say that, um. I struggled a lot with the decision to run for city council. I joked earlier about my verse, but I'm somebody who believes wholeheartedly in service. I am somebody who was raised by the community, as they, as they say, raised by the village. Um, I, I was somebody who always depended on my community to help my family thrive. And so I've always wanted to give back wherever I can, however I can. And so it was not really that wild of an idea when I was asked to run for this office. But as it got closer and as it got closer, I've been struggling a lot with the enormity. Of the decisions that I recognized I would have to be voting on. In twenty-four, within twenty-four hours of being sworn in. And. I am very glad to share that burden with these six other people. Very glad, so. Thank you.
Counselor Sylvia?
I don't have much. Um, just an idea I had, I brought up to Rod. Um, and I don't know how I'm gonna work on it, but I guess I'll work on it with him. Uh, that I want to get a street dedicated to Officer Sumter. I think the city owes it to him. Um, whether or not we have to rename a street somewhere, or a new street that's being made, we dedicate it to Officer Sumter.
I think you need to consider the new building, when and ever it gets.
I think that would be great. Oh, yes.
I like that.
I think it should be the building whenever that, that person happens.
Well, yeah, uh, it just, I think we owe it to him and his family to do more.
Counsel President Bush?
I'd just like to say. This has been really hard. I'm a communicator, like I'm a communicator man, and I can't lie, like I. It's really hard for me not to speak up, especially when I hear so much disinformation being distributed. I, I keep throwing this out there, we're all volunteers, we don't get paid to do this. It's a horrible job sometimes. I'm, I'm breaking out in hives right now. I've been scratching for the last hour. Yeah, I'm gonna be bleeding tonight, I'm sure. We have so many restrictions on what we can do as city officials. We cannot talk about much of anything, besides the fact that none of us, even the mayor. None of us has any power without the rest of us. We're not supposed to be getting online and speaking on city issues. If it's not a direct reflection of the consensus of all of us. It's very hard to get online and safely speak to issues of the city. In any depth at all, like just superficial little information is all, like, we can be fined tens of thousands of dollars. We can go to jail. And when we get a, um, any sort of, um. Anything from an employee complaining about somebody else in the city, we now are legally responsible to have an investigation. And we're not allowed to talk about it. And that's why this thing spread like wildfire and went out of control, because all you guys had was what you were thinking. And you didn't have what was really happening, and we're not allowed to talk about what's happening. And it broke all of our hearts that we couldn't talk about it. It kills me when I can't communicate with people and explain what's going on. It sucks. I can't even tell you guys. It's not that we were hiding things. It's not that we were being dishonest. We're literally not allowed to talk about things that are being investigated, and I'm sorry. I hate that it's like that. I understand why it's like that. It's to protect. Everybody, but it feels like we're keeping something from you. We're not. We're not.
We don't intend.
We don't intend to. The only things we keep from you are what we're told. We're not allowed to talk about. Or we could go to jail or get fined. It, it's really hard. It's really hard being up here. I know it's hard being up there too. I know. My husband is a police officer. He's code enforcement. I, I know, I know. I, I, I know. And I'm sorry that we couldn't tell you guys more. I really am. That's all I have.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What happens to all those firefighters?
Oh, yeah. Can you come up and sign in and then tell everybody your name, and fire away?
Mayor, do you want to set out one minute?
Yes, one minute.
I'll talk while I sign. What happens to all those firefighters that's just put in for temporary leave of absence? That those two gave letters to?
We.
And told them they're terminated.
We don't, we don't control that. Okay, um, number one, they're volunteers, so technically, there's a firewall between. The city council and the volunteers.
So that will be up to the, to the fire.
It will be up to the city staff and, uh, those folks that are directly involved with the fire department. To include the cit- the pro temp city manager.
Okay, thanks.
You bet. There's several people in this room that have known me for over twenty years. And, Tim. I'm glad I don't break out in hives. But those, those of you in here that have known me for a long time, know that two words I have a really hard time saying are no comment. It has been. The longest three months I've ever had.
Yes.
Sitting up here. And I'm starting my nineteenth year on this dais. It's been hell. I, I know it's not as much as the people that are going through the investigation. I don't mean to imply that. But not being able to speak into this, I will call it what I consider it, raging wildfire going through Toledo. Okay, of misinformation, of he said, she said, of. You know, I get this little snippet over here and I run with it out the door, and. And having to sit there and just go, I can't talk about it. I can't say anything. Has been very, very difficult. We have put part of this behind us now. We need to start healing this community again. And I'm, I'll be honest, I'm looking at all of you, I'm looking at the people online who are either gonna, are either watching it live now. Or they're gonna download the video and look at it. We have to get this town back together again. Okay, we have been down this road before in the city of Toledo. Okay, we have had crises within, yes, Lisa?
We have an audience from around.
Okay, I'll pause.
Daniel, you should be able to speak now.
Yeah, I want to speak for, I can only speak for myself. We've been down this road before. But the last time it's happened, when the chief was in trouble, we didn't, uh, allow the pay staff to run amok up there and change everything. Stick cameras up, lock doors, treat us like we are criminals. And I'll tell you right now, as long as Shannon and Ryan work at that fire station. I'll never volunteer for this fire department or the city ever again, and I've been there thirty-five years. You, you are right about not being able to talk and tell people anything, but the one thing you could have done. Is, is kept things status quo until your investigation was over with, and not allowed those two to run amok. So, I'm done. Well, I was, I'm already, I already resigned. And it's really unfortunate, thirty-five years, and I feel like the city threw crap all over me. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Jackie?
He did want to comment, because the decision that we made to not authorize. The pro temp city manager to make a termination decision wasn't our lack of. Confidence in her decisions or ability. We think it's a decision that was greater than her ability or our position that we had put her in. So it's not that she had decided to terminate. Or not terminate. Those decisions had not been made yet. But, the decision to terminate or not. Is more than what we pay her for. So that's our decision to make, not hers. That's why we voted that way.
So to continue my comments. When I was saying the city has been in crisis, I wasn't just referring to the fire department.
No.
Seven years ago, the city was in a major crisis of confidence across the board about everything. Okay? Nobody trusted anyone. We came through that. Three years before that is the crisis that Daniel was talking about. That one was at the fire hall. In two thousand and six, we had a crisis when the person sitting in this chair died four months into office. And we're trying to figure out, where do we go from here? When the two thousand and eight financial bubble went off. And our taxes went down, and we didn't know if we were gonna have enough money to keep everybody on for the next couple of years. We weathered that. We are Toledoans. We are strong when we work together. And that's why this fire department over the years has been the strongest department in this. Is because y'all had each other's backs, y'all worked with each other. You kept each other afloat when somebody was going sideways, okay? And it's true of this entire community. Okay, if you look back at the ice storm, people stopped caring about what the other person was thinking. They just went out and helped. Okay, that's who we are. And I truly believe at the end of the day, we're gonna come back stronger. It's gonna take time. Okay, and I'm looking at all of you, everybody online. Help make the community stronger. Bring us back better than we were before. And that is my hope and prayer for this community, this council, this city government and our citizenry as a whole. And that's all I have tonight. And with that, we're adjourned.